City of Palaca Commission Meeting, we'd like to welcome each and every one of you here today. As we call the meeting to order, we'll have our invitation by Reverend Jarvis F. Wright, Pastor of New St. Paul Church of God in Christ in Seville, Florida. After that, we are going to have the Glisten Brothers lead us in the pledge. Will everyone please stand at this time?
Let us pray. Most gracious and everlasting Father God, before we ask you for anything, we just want to say thank you for everything. We thank you for your power and your spirit that is always with us. God, we thank you for your faithfulness. We know, God, that you are a sovereign God, and we ask, God, that your sovereignty will be in this meeting. Bless every official, bless our mayor, bless every commissioner, bless every single thing that would take place, God. We pray that your wisdom and your power will be in this house so that we ultimately will bring you all of the glory. And we ask all of these blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Apologies to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, God.
Hey, let's give it up for the Glisten Brothers. Especially Gavin, who's calling this out of everybody. Gavin and Logan. And Asher. Am I getting it right? Also Pastor, definitely thank you for being here today. Figured it was a long journey coming from work to get up here. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown.
Right.
Commissioner Borum.
Commissioner McCaslin.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
All members are present, and you have a forum.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the meetings from both meetings on January 16th and January 25th?
Motion approved.
Second.
There's a motion on the Florida second. Any further discussion? Questions called, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item one of the agenda, public recognition and presentations for Palaca Fire Department. I'll entertain a motion to cancel that for the day. See, now I'm gonna go ahead and call up Chief at this time.
Thank you all very much for having us tonight. It means a lot. This is something we started years ago that we kind of got away from. I think it's real important in the mark of somebody's career. When we hire them here to the city, we should bring them down here and introduce them to you guys and have the ability, it's a tradition in the fire service, to have their significant other or their parent pin them when they get their badge for duty. Tonight, we're gonna start with three gentlemen we hired in 2017. We'll start with Mr. John Foley, if you'll come forward. John was hired by the Palaca Fire Department on April 20th. He's lived in the St. Augustine area his whole life. He graduated from Bartram Trail High School in 2014. He's a graduate from First Coast Technical College for fire school. He enjoys working out, participating in community outreach events, and spending time with his family and friends. John's enthusiasm and positive attitude in each and every time he attends work makes him an asset to the department. Enjoyable to be around and serves well with other people in his careers. And if his... John, who's gonna do your pen?
Mr. John.
Mr. John, Mr. John Foley, his father, is gonna step up and pin his son. No, please don't step. Gentlemen, two holes. If we could, if, uh, John's mom's in the crowd, she's probably joining for picture, and also his girlfriend suffers in the house, so that it's...
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Matthew House, also known by Mayor Terrell Hill as CrossFit Santa, was hired by the department November 30th of 2017. He's lived in the area most of his life, graduated from Keystone Heights High School in 2007. Following high school, he spent four years in the United States Marine Corps and attended two years at Santa Fe College. He graduated from Florida Gateway College Fire School in 2017. Matt's work ethic, reliability, and willingness to learn are evident. He will undoubtedly be a benefit to our department in the years to come. I think his captain's gonna pin him tonight. That shirt's women's, it's CrossFit Santa.
I had a lot of Milky Cookies over Christmas.
Yeah, it's Apple Kids. No, uh, everybody, I mean, y'all probably didn't recognize him, but he was our Santa Claus during our Christmas time with the kids. So it was awesome having to do that as well. All right, the next one we have up is Mr. Sean Glisten. Sean was hired back in the summer, uh, June 27th. He moved to Florida in 2003 and a graduate from Pedro Benedez High School in 2005. Sean has always displayed a character to help others in need. His hard work and dedication are attributed and displayed in his family and his lawn care business. He lives in St. Augustine with his wife Brittany, three sons Logan, Asher, and Gavin. Sean's ability to lead and inspire will be a great asset to the Palaca Fire Department. So I think his wife and his father, I think his dad, Earl Glisten, is gonna pin. We also have some awards that we did around the holidays. And what I did is started something new. And it was, I gave the employees a ballot. And I said, pick the guys that stick out the most to you and the things they do around the fire station that they can be rewarded for. And I come up with a Rookie of the Year, which means our new firefighter that we hired in this year, a Firefighter of the Year, and a Fire Officer of the Year. So, um, our Rookie Firefighter of the Year goes to Mr. John Foley. When I talk at the Christmas party, you know, John is just one of those guys that you cannot have a bad day around. You know, John comes to the station, you know, with a great attitude, wants to work every day. I mean, he'll literally run through a wall if we ask him. You know, so he's just a great guy to have around. I mean, I'll take a fire station full of him, he's got a great attitude, treats everybody with respect. I mean, just, just overall, just a fantastic guy. And you can stay here for the rest of them, since I don't wanna get you up first.
He even put on a Santa Claus outfit too, right?
No, that was, that was my house. That was the guy in the...
Oh, okay.
But I did run through a wall.
No, but he, but he's wore the Sparky outfit to the kids, like Trump retreat, things like that. So, I mean, he, he reaches out and just got a good positive attitude in everything we do. The next one was Firefighter of the Year. I couldn't be prouder of this guy. This guy's done a lot for the department. He is the guy that started our backpack program this year. He is the one that took the ground and ran with the, with the program for the kids for, for Christmas. Uh, Mr. Robert Moore. He puts in all the extra work. I mean, he does a great job. I mean, just comes up with fantastic ideas. If we could pull off all the ideas he comes up with, we're gonna be doing good. So, I'd like to thank Robert for everything he does. Last but not least, um, our Fire Officer of the Year. This is one that shows a lot of leadership. You know, that's what I was looking for out of him, and I think they did a great job of picking. Engineer Darren Denmark, if you could come forward. Our engineer's a guy, I mean, he's promoted from firefighter to engineer to drive the truck. But it's a lot more than that. You know, when we talked about being able to remodel our kitchen downtown, and I called Darren, I said, hey, I think we got approval to do it. By the time I got from here to downtown, the walls were already gone. I was like, well, I guess it's too late to pull back now. But, I mean, he, he led us through that project. I mean, he's the one that whenever we got a project that's going around town that we need some construction work, he's our man. We lean on him heavily. Um, I mean, he's one that orchestrated our roofs through the parks program. But, I mean, three just outstanding firefighters in front of me. I wouldn't trade them for the world. They do a fantastic job, day in and day out. And I wish I could give one to every one of our firefighters, because every one of them deserve it. But this was, this was voted on by their peers. And I didn't pick them, their peers picked them. And I, I don't think they made a mistake. I think they did a great, fantastic job. So, thank you guys very much. That's all I have for you. So, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Now we move on to public comment. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. Saying goodbye to the...
Bye, guys. Bye. Nice meeting you guys.
Anyone wishing to speak, please fill out a yellow speaker's card in the, in the back of the room. Uh, as you come up to the podium, please give your name and address so that we'll have it for the record. Uh, I've got one speaker card at this time, that is Mr. Bob Griffin.
My name is Bob Griffin. I live at 309 River Street. Well, that's a tough act to follow, great firefighters.
Yes, sir.
We've got some more opportunity. Coming to ask for your support in the coming weeks and months for traffic calming on River Street. We've had a problem there for quite some time. Excessive speed and a lot of through traffic coming through that really is not appropriate for residential neighborhood. We've also seen a demonstrated inability of some of the drivers at those speeds to stay in their lanes and not veer over into the lanes, uh, oncoming lane and into the property, properties that are there. Uh, it's a, it's supposed to be a, I believe, a collector road, which is designed to connect residential areas to the arterials. But it's being used as an arterial road for through traffic at rush hour. People are coming down from Highway 19 and Silver Lake and Brown's Landing Road, trying to get to Memorial Bridge without going through the rest of the traffic of Palaca. And I see it every, every morning and every evening at rush hour. Because, you know, you have to be very careful crossing the street there. Uh, we've seen traffic out there that's more appropriate to Reed Street, the speeds are. Also complicating that is the boat ramp traffic, which the boats, trailers come out there very slowly, and all of a sudden, an onrushing car. I hope there's no tragedy there. Um, and I don't, I don't think a lot of the folks that are coming through there are Palaca City residents. I think they're coming from the county and outside the county. We do really appreciate the efforts of the Palaca Police Department at trying to enforce the 25 mile an hour speed limit on that road. But enforcement alone cannot do it. As soon as the police are gone, the people are back to their bad habits and their, and consider it driving. Uh, Palaca Police Department has done a very good job within the resources that they have in trying to protect us and preserve our public safety there. But enforcement is not the answer. Engineering is the answer. We want to see, there's a variety of things that can be done there. And I haven't been in a meeting yet where anybody agreed on anything on which to use. And no matter what we do, we're not gonna make everybody happy. But something has to be done. We've been talking about it for years. I've suffered casually losses from hit-and-run drivers running into my property. They ran into my bedroom, caused $15,000 worth of damage to my wall two, three years ago. More recently, they ran into my knee wall and crashed into my little camper van. Well, I didn't spend much on the camper van, but it was towed. You know, so, uh, that's unreasonable. But, you know, they crossed from the opposite lane. Don't get me started too late. Uh, some of the proposed solutions include lane striping, raised crosswalks, uh, and intersections. Speed radar signage has some promise.
Ten seconds to wrap up.
Okay. This needs to be addressed more than ever. We have increased pedestrian and, and, uh, children moving, using the park down there. It's getting, it's getting to be a lot more used by... I'm gonna ask that this go onto the agenda for the next meeting. I'm gonna file the paperwork tomorrow and get you a packet for your action. Then we really appreciate your time and consideration and look forward to working with you on this.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just, just as a follow-up, I've had an opportunity to speak to both Chief Shaw and also Mr. Griffin as it relates to this matter. I know Commissioner Borum has worked tirelessly on this issue as well. But it's time for us to sit down and workshop it. I think more so than any, than put it on the agenda without even getting the information in place. But I think it's time for us to sit down and workshop it. It's something that, uh, I think staff has been working on for, with the coming... There was, there's been traffic calming studies, there've been some other things done. But I think a workshop is, uh, I think a workshop is a good place for us to start. And Jonathan, if you don't mind, just expound it briefly. Just so that we'll, just so the commission will kind of know what's been taking place thus far.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, there's a couple of things that we've done immediately. The first is discussing with Chief Shaw and Chief Grimes. We believe that a trial, a four-way stop at River and Laurel has promise. Um, so we have put that request into the county because with the road being a minor collector, technically the county has jurisdiction through the interlocal agreement. That should be coming before their transportation committee meeting this month. I attend those meetings, so I'll be able to report back to you. Um, and I believe a workshop is probably a good direction, Mayor. And as Mr. Reynolds stated, we do have a very thorough traffic study with, I believe, five or six options that range from very expensive to, you know, those things that we can do immediately within our current budget constraints. So if the, if the commission would like, I can work with the city manager. I guess he left already. Yeah. And the clerk to schedule a workshop the earliest convenient.
Let's make sure we coordinate also with Mr. Griffin, the South Estoril neighborhood.
Yes, of course.
Tiki, anything else you wanna add?
No, sir, I've already met with Mr. Griffin, and I've had dialogue with the South Estoril issue as well.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a question on, as it relates in that curb? Would it be proper, maybe, it may not fit within the, um, the construct of how the South Estoril? I don't know. The nature of the, um, the South Estoril area, where you may put in like a protector like they, they have on the bridges where you, uh, where you go off the road and you got the barrier there to kind of keep it, yeah.
You're referring to what's called a Jersey Barrier?
Yeah.
They do make traffic bollies. Uh, that is something that we could look into. It was not something that was recommended as part of the, the traffic calming study. That'd be more of an armorment element.
Yeah. And so, um, if we can, if we can share the traffic study with everyone in the commission as well as with, um, as Agent A, get that over. And so, and also, I'm sure Chief has a copy of it already, but so that everyone else can kind of be brought up to speed on what's going on and any suggestions that the commission has that you may want to put into the agenda package for the workshop. Just go ahead and get with, uh, Mr. Griffin, that we can kind of start moving that ball. And I guess that's done by general consensus. I didn't hear anybody yelling screaming, no. So, we'll make that work. Is that amiable for everybody?
Yes, for me.
That works. I, I think it's, it's fine time that we get to that. Yes, sir.
Um, you know, I'm all about making sure that it's posted. So, um, can we, I know we have two coming up, so can we try to do this, um, early March first to make sure that we get this taken care of?
Let's just see if we can get it prior to the first meeting in March. We figure we'll need, what, about an hour? Or if, if we can get everybody, uh, get everybody's comments to kind of be taken towards what we got. For an hour, it should have sufficient time for us to do what we need to do.
I would say so.
At least we can start it out with an hour.
Let's start out with, let's start out with an hour. Uh, but, well, let's, let's put a 30-minute lag in between that workshop and the commission meeting so that we, that way, just in case we run over a few minutes we've got in place. I think that the traffic comment, uh, I think the traffic study in itself will, will lend some additional information further by. Very well. Moving the agenda. If there's no one else here for public comment. Seeing no one. Item three is the consent agenda. Has everyone had an opportunity to review item eight three? On the consent agenda, if so, is there anything that needs to be removed?
Motion to approve all.
There's a motion, there's a motion on the Florida second by Commissioner Borum. Any further discussion? Questions called, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item four of the agenda for public hearings. An ordinance amending chapter two, section two, dash two zero four and section two, dash two zero five of the Palaca Municipal Code, General Employees Retirement Plan Investment Policy Statement to Add Infrastructure as an Approved Investment Asset Class, second reading to adopt.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, revising the Code of Ordinances of the City of Palaca, Florida by amending the Investment Policy Statement of the City of Palaca General Employees Retirement Plan to Add Infrastructure as an Authorized Investment. Amending section two, dash two zero four, Investment Performance Objectives. Amending section two, dash two zero five, Investment Guidelines. Providing Perseverability and Providing an Effective Date.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion on the Florida second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we close public hearing. Questions called. Without further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're about to break a record. City Manager and Administrative Reports, item five of the agenda. Mr. Yul, you gotta come up. You have 4,000 people there, not five.
Aw, man.
And you only got two minutes.
I'd be remiss if I didn't thank everybody for their support. We had another safe fly-in, our eighth annual. We're getting this thing down to a science here. But thank you for your support and for coming out. The city staff, Jonathan gave us some people to help us out that, that, you know, getting ready for it. Also, I'd like to thank him, Fire Department, Police Department, and Airport Advisory Board, and Army of Volunteers that comes out. Uh, we just can't go without them, and we didn't see them. Thank, give them a hearty thank you. And patronize the businesses that, uh, support this, uh, the event. We, uh, had an Airport Advisory Board meeting yesterday. Uh, the first item that came up was, uh, traffic control.
Yeah.
We hope, we hope we've got some work out for us next year and try to take advantage of the other gates around the airports and maybe some shuttle buses or something.
Can we, uh...
We'll work, we'll work that out.
Is there a way to put an apron, another apron out there so that we can come across, uh, come, have two entrances into that open yard space at the airport?
So there are number of...
We've only got that one entrance point. Is there a way to have an auxiliary entrance point? None paid?
There's an entrance off of Moody Road that we want to look at.
In the open green space, right in front of the... Yeah, you know, we got the main road that we turn into. If we had an addition, if we had a separate point of ingress and egress, right, just, if it's just a pipe, if it's some roadway, driveway that we block off just for that event, I think it'll make traffic 10 times better.
And if we can turn the light on...
Right next to the, uh, right next to the, the storage facility.
That doesn't go on there.
That, that road does not go on, but we could cut a temporary hole in the fence and get to the, uh, the road to the skydive.
We just gotta, we gotta figure out a way.
We talked about that when he's...
Thirty minutes to get from Moody Road to the airport.
I was behind you.
It took you 25 minutes to do it?
But there's a, but it's a great problem to have a traffic problem. And so, before we do anything else, John, I just wanted to stand and give you a round of applause for what you did for the Airport Advisory Board. So, let the, let the Airport Advisory Board know that we are definitely grateful for the work that you got done in making this an awesome event for Palaca. And it's getting bigger by the year. And if traffic is the only problem that we've got, then we're doing well.
The chairperson wants to come to our next meeting.
And, and he, and he wanted to come tonight, but he asked me to apologize if something came up and he could not make it. But he asked me to pass on to you guys. And if you know, John, you know this comes from the heart. He wants to thank you for supporting his effort to support the community, who he is. And the advisory board does a great job.
And I know they had some other volunteers, but, but, but the first time they had it up to now, Roddy Eagle Boys Ranch has come in and parked all those people.
Oh, yeah.
And I'd like to see if we could have them come in and acknowledge, acknowledge them.
Yes, and, and thank you.
Not a problem.
Thank you, Commissioners, for coming out.
Absolutely.
And you're part of, you had a level of dignity that, frankly, we, we needed.
Certainly appreciate it. Chief Shaw. He's got on this good shirt today. Hi, Chief, how are you? Glad to see you. Just for the record, Chief Shaw's one of the basketball coaches for the Black Panthers, who are 23-1 this year. And so, uh, 22-1?
Twenty-three and two.
Oh, two? My bad.
Lovely, lovely.
Rough night last night.
Yeah.
You're doing, you're doing a great job, Chief.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Uh, just wanted to bring up one small thing. It's not really a small event, very large event, but we will be hosting a fundraiser for POW, which is the chief gala, on the 17th of February, which is not this coming Saturday, but the following. Um, and I would like to thank the commission and the City of Palaca for purchasing the table and that fundraiser. The event is gonna be held at the Price Martin Center, and we'll be opening the doors at 6 o'clock and then beginning to serve dinner at 7:30. Hopefully, I'll be able to see as many people from the city there in attendance as possible. But I wanted to take this time to say thank you to you all for at least purchasing the tables. And hopefully, I'll see you at the event. Thank you.
Got some personal purchases in there too, my whole family.
You're gonna have any good shirt? Wait, 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 you need some more? Time is up. I did, I did, I'm out of shirt tomorrow. So if you like the table, I mean, like the ticket. It's Robinson. Come on down. Chief, you took it off the time earlier. Great job, though. But I, I'll tell you, it's always good we can recognize, um, our, our, our staff and our employees and just to see smiling faces in the city and that momentum that's taking place and people who are excited about coming to work. And those guys have definitely done a lot in this community, and we are just glad to see, uh, positive, something positive. And so, definitely, we applaud you and your leadership as well.
Man. The, um, gala is, is, it also conflict, all right. Uh, the gala also conflict with the Chamber of Commerce fundraiser for the year, uh, annual fundraiser. So Jesse, just think about it going forward and also, um, by star invite them next year.
It's not too late. Our deadline is not until tomorrow.
Okay. That's it.
Hey, so much for that. Ms. Grickers, you got anything else for us?
I want to defer to you on March Dimes.
On March Dimes, you can go ahead and start out and talk a little bit about your candy sales, and I'll go ahead and, and then close it out.
Mayor did a fantastic job today emceeing and hosting the March Dimes kickoff meeting at the Women's Club. It was a packed house. There was an empty chair in there. Sold a lot of candy at that. Uh, we are selling candy at, uh, the Gas Authority. Apparently, the first day they broke out the boxes of candy, they sold two boxes. So, uh, mostly to the, to the employees. But, um, and they're trying a little something new this year. Um, they've got frontal runs. So go down, buy a box, you know?
Well, can you give them a...
So, I was gonna say, yeah, do you have boxes that are acting like passable tickets at school?
Sure. And the school's gonna be selling too. Well, yeah. Sure, if anybody wants to help out, we will, and I believe you have a challenge.
So definitely, Betsy's done a great job with this. For anybody knows that this is one of the things that's near and dear to Betsy's heart. Um, this year, I have the privilege of being the chair for March Dimes. Um, and our challenge to the county overall is to raise $75,000. If you recall, last year, our challenge to the city, including candy sales and also boot drives and things of that nature, was to raise $5,000. When you put everything in totality, we did that. But we raised about $3,900 in, in actual funds that we delivered during the March Dimes event. So this year, we want to raise $5,000 outside of candy sales. We're challenging the Police Department, Public Works, and the Fire Department. And we're gonna ask the Fire Department to not do one boot drive, but to do three. If it's all short, that would be two. And so, but we, we know that there's an opportunity here for us to do something very special. Former Mayor Tim Smith is one of our, he is, he is also one of our ambassadors for this year. He's ambassador, you saw that come up. Uh, Tim gave an awesome testimony about, uh, him and his brother growing up with Polio. But the challenge this year for the City of Palaca is $5,000. Commissioners, you already, you were on board last year, you know what your challenge is. If anybody wants to do, um... If anybody wants to do the income deduction for March Dimes, it's out there. But the challenge right now is for, we'll call it city hall staff versus the Police Department versus the Fire Department. Versus the Fire Department and Public Works. And so there's a challenge. The Police, Fire Department has a twenty-five hundred dollar head start. So we'll duck off from there. So the challenge is out there. The challenge, we've got to raise, our goal is to raise five thousand dollars for the city of Palatka.
By April twenty-first.
April twenty-first. This year, guys, this year we want to actually have more people out there than just Betsy and the commissioners and one or two other folks. We want to get, we want to have a presence at this thing. We want to paint the town purple. And so, guys, we want you to participate, get your, get your folks to participate. We really want to make this a big event.
We also challenge Palatka Daily News.
Nick's got it. And so, and the radio station. So we're good. So again, let's put the challenges out there. We've got a challenge for churches as well coming forward within the city. And so, and also the county and outline counties that are close enough. We're gonna move forward, but that's where we are. Mr. Reynolds.
Going for the record, nothing, sir.
No, you gotta talk. This is your last meeting.
Yeah, you gotta say something.
Oh, you got one more. She's trying to kick the man out there. This is last meeting of talk.
It is, it is.
It's your last meeting of talk. So give us closing remarks on that.
Well, I want to thank the commission for giving me the opportunity to step in and be interim for these, how many months has it been now?
A lot.
Six, six months now, five months. So I just want to thank each and every one of y'all. So I really, I truly appreciate it. I would not be where I am today without y'all. And I want to make that publicly known. So, thank you.
That's the most words you ever get out of them. Here we go. So. Better yet, we're gonna defer to wisdom first. Vice Mayor.
All I want to say is several of us went to Tallahassee and did our job. And that's it. Ooh, you did it.
Got him. It's only case of you laugh around here. We'll continue on down that road. Commissioner Board.
Nothing said, but again, we got Matt another time and I'll express my feelings with Matt for his last meeting or whatever. I think it'd be proper for to do that instead of doing it now. So Matt knows how I feel about it and again, I wish him well and for to continue to working with it.
Commissioner McCaskill.
Nothing to like. Much anyway.
For those who didn't realize, Commissioner Campbell has on glasses for tonight. He says it makes him look smarter. Commissioner, get the Commissioner Campbell.
My glasses on so I can see. No, just real quick, if you would like a ticket to the Chief's Gala, our deadline is tomorrow. So there's still room to get your table and or personal seat. The tickets are forty dollars. You can see myself or the Chief of Police. In the event that you cannot attend, we are accepting donations. It is all going to POW who are doing wonderful things within this community. Not only for our youth, but for those that are involved with POW. We have a dynamic group of volunteers. And this is an opportunity for you to give and let us pick for you.
Got a couple of things as I give my report. No, first and foremost, spent three days in Tallahassee seeking appropriations for two water projects. One is for a potable water project, which is a phase of, of our five-phase water projects to see what we can do about changing the potable water structure within the city. The other thing in that was for six hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. The other appropriation was for three point two million dollars for our wastewater treatment plant, which again is the main priority that we have within the city. Hats off to Yolanda Cass Jackson, Mario Bailey from Becker Poliakoff, and also Karen Asher. We had an opportunity to, to really go through. Got a call from Senator Perry, Representative and Representative Payne about where we work. And so Senator Perry has really worked tirelessly on this project. We met with Representative Payne and his staff to really push forward. We've got a placeholder in place right now as, as they get ready to go into, into conference, hoping that we can get some appropriations for the city of Palatka. And we've knocked down doors. We've gone through the back doors of the Senate Building and also the House Building. And it was just an awesome time. One of the things that I saw that meant so much to me, one of the things that was really there that we saw that was so awesome. And Commissioner Board was there with me as we got recognized from the floor of the House, but one from the House, from the floor of the Senate by Senator Perry was Statue of Mary McLeod Bethune. It's so fitting because it's Black History Month. Statue of Mary McLeod Bethune is now going to be representative of the state of Florida and it goes in place of General Kirby Smith. And but what we saw there at that time was something that goes right along with what we've been doing in race relations symposiums and things of that nature. We saw a senator who was a descendant of a Confederate general who had been anti Mary McLeod Bethune for so long. He got up and he said something very profound. He said that when his amendment went in to find a place for a home for the Statue of Kirby Smith, he was met with respect and dignity as it related to his ancestors. Therefore, his response to them, and that was Senator Baxley's, his response was, I'm gonna meet them with the same respect and dignity. And for the first time, I'm going to vote to have Mary McLeod Bethune statue in place and it passed unanimously. And what we saw was just an opportunity where people from different walks of life have all come together, really in a very contentious time within the legislature to stand on one accord. And we saw some really touching things there and I was just really excited about that. The second thing is, and this is a point of consideration for the commission, we gave a mandate to the Small Business Development Center to come back with some information for our C R A meeting. And we asked them to give us some data as it related to how local businesses were being supported, particularly businesses within the city of Palatka. Their response to that information was that they are unable to provide us with that information. And so we will need to get direction from both the commission and the agency. As to where we go from there, the contractual relationship is up with, with that entity and we need to determine the chambers contractual relationship is up, the county's contractual relationship is up at this point. And we've got to determine whether we want to continue on with SBDC in the same manner, if we want to give them some additional directions as to what we want contractually so that we get the data that we want, because it makes no sense to be able to give money and not get any information back that supports why we're spending citizens' money in this manner. So we will, we will need to have a conversation, a very clear conversation with them about expectations and about direction as to where we go. My suggestion is that we actually have a, a meeting for the Small Business Development Center to have their regional director come in and actually talk to us as opposed to anyone else. And, and really let them know what the citizens require and what the commission expects. I think that's fair. They've done a great job, I think, and in my estimation in the community overall. But we just need to make sure we're all on the same page.
May I say, we have nothing to say, but we've been trying to get a business incubator since the eighties. And I would like when we do that and put it there for discussion, the Episcopal Diocese in Jacksonville helped get Beaver Street started. They've been over here and talked us and Father Morris said he was willing to bring some folks over here to go with us. So I'd like to have them involved and invited so that they can let this commission know more about it and how it's put together. It teaches people how to start their own businesses and keep them going. I just want to put that in your head so that you can be thinking about it.
And that's something that me and Mr. Reynolds discussed as well, just the fact that the majority of the party for the commission and for the city, it's one of our four major priorities. And they've been using the concept of virtual incubation. I think it's time to look at brick and mortar as an opportunity. There's enough federal dollars out there to make it a reality. But I think we owe, I think we owe SBDC the courtesy of having them come in and having the conversation and just letting them know what our future expectations are and seeing if they can meet those. And if they can, then that's great and we continue to cultivate relationship. But I wanted to bring that to your attention.
And speaking on the incubation, there was something in the newspaper, I don't know if it was supposed to have been published or not, but supposed to have been part of that, that one deal that they got with the Kmart building or whatever. So that was put out last week. I don't know if anybody else read it or not, but I seen something in there as it relates to how the business that was going to be coming, one of the incubations was part of.
There's another project here in town. I can't really give a lot of detail on it, but it, it brings about that same incubation process as well. We'll see it come up. It'll be very noticeable. But I, I think that the time is right for us to continue on the path that we've been on, which is giving clear direction as to what our expectations are for providing resources. And I, I think that we can schedule it. If it's okay with the commission, can we do that maybe a few minutes? It shouldn't, that shouldn't be a very long meeting. Can we do that prior to, on the same day as that March meeting? You want to do that the same day as you do the workshop for the traffic?
Yes.
Yeah, you know.
Do you want to do that as a C R A meeting?
We do it as emergency C R A meeting. We do a C R A workshop.
Wouldn't be an emergency. It would be, if you're doing it in March.
But we can do it as a C R A workshop or meeting. Just do it as a meeting. That way if we need to take action, we can.
Okay.
And so, and that way the new representative from the county can be president as well. So that covers me. I'm well over my time because Commissioner Board and Commissioner Brown took my time up and still.
I'm sorry.
I've got this up up here. I went into the fly-in, but it's world-class. The business is normally housed in the hangar where we have the food operation. This year specializes in maintaining world-class aerobatic aircraft. And one of those aircraft competed in the first race of the year on the Red Bull series. I don't know if you've ever seen these Red Bull airplanes that make high-speed turns, load the ground, and then it makes a little turn and comes back through. But it's a very popular event among aerobatic pilots. The first race was in Dubai during the fly-in. And lo and behold, if the gentleman, the pilot, did not win the first race of the year.
Wow.
So we got a world-class aerobatic plane that won the first race of the year. It's piloted by a gentleman from St. Augustine by the name of Michael Gullian. But it's maintained by the gentleman who runs that business out of the airport by the name of Warren Siliers. He's the crew chief on that airplane. You know, very important to the speed and everything of a airplane. So if you get a chance, stop in and congratulate them. They're going after the world championship. And if you, if you've not Googled Red Bull Air Racing, do it and you'll see just how crazy it is. But it's top of the, top of the line world-class stuff. Need to see the picture of that airplane in Dubai going through.
You said Red Bull Air Racing?
Red Bull Air Racing. And it was neat to see the picture of the airplane in Dubai with all the skyscrapers in the background. And then see a picture of the city in that hangar in Palatka, Florida.
And John, it's a great segue. As, as we talk about world championships, we also had an international visitor to the community. I'll let, I'll let Mike Brown talk about that.
Representative Yoho was here two weeks ago and Rupert and I got a chance to go because it was the middle of the day. He brought a delegation from Vietnam over and they are, are looking and interested, I think, in starting businesses or finding out about the area. And he sits on one of those committees. He told us he chairs, I think, the Asiatic Committee that deals with all of, all of that going on. As he talked to us, they gave us information and they, they said they were very happy. They went out in the boat. Our water taxi. And they had a really lovely time. And I suggested that maybe we could do something at our airport or our industrial complex. And one way to get to it is to do another sister city because they put stuff together and it might help us find something that we could import to them or something they could export to us for sale. And they were happy to hear that. And the deputy chief of missions left his card with us. So he was serious enough, we were serious enough to do it. It was stuck in everybody's box and I passed it on, reminded the mayor of it. I think that we'll be open for, for those things and that will create more jobs and good paying jobs if we can get it done. They also talked about Shannon Bridge and if we could ever get it raised. And the gentleman that had the steel factory out there, he was there.
Very hostile.
Yeah. And he was very interested in seeing and encouraging us to encourage people to use the steel.
Thank you. And so, and so again, there are a lot of exciting things that are going on right now. The commission is hard at work. And Palatka's moving forward. We're excited about what's going on. We've got some folks who are moving up the ladder to different positions. But at the same time, everyone has to get better. And anytime there's growth and there's prosperity in this community, I think that the relationship with the city and the county is going to be even stronger with both Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Suggs out there. We're gonna push forward. We're also gonna try to keep everybody else from going. So that's where we are. So again, we're excited and we are.